Good evening. I'm Marty Mix, President of the League of Women Voters of Golden Valley, and your Moderator for the Eden Prairie Mayor and City Council Candidate Forum. I'd like to welcome all of you tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Minnetonka, Eden Prairie, Hopkins. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan political organization which encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Representatives of the League of Women Voters will be available in the lobby after this forum to meet with the candidates in the audience. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It's our purpose in sponsoring these meetings, such as this, to provide you with the opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues that are important to you. There's never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time in a setting such as this. And if your questions are not addressed, feel free to contact the candidate directly. This event is not being broadcast live on community cable TV and will be rebroadcast repeatedly in its entirety. It will also be available by streaming video at the city websites Individual recording and photography that does not disrupt this event is allowed. Tonight's questions have been submitted by our live audience and online. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall in the same general area may be consolidated. Cards become the property of League of Women Voters. If the answer was unclear to you, feel free to submit a follow-up question or to ask the candidate after the forum. I'll now introduce the candidates for Eden Prairie Mayor, and those candidates are Brad Aho and Ron Case. And the four candidates running for two city council seats are Mark Freiberg, Andrew Muller, PJ Norrinen, and Kathy Nelson. The mayor election will just be one seat, and the city council will fill two. Thank you to the candidates, as well as the audience, for coming tonight. Let's just give them a quick round of applause to warm them up before their two-minute opening statements. We'll begin with the two-minute opening statements, and following that, candidates have one minute to respond to questions submitted by the audience, and response order will be randomized. Our candidate forum will wrap up with one-minute closing statements from each candidate. So now we begin with the two-minute opening statements. And we're going to begin in alphabetical order. Everything else will be random. We'll start with Brad Aho.
Well, thank you, Marty. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this candidate forum tonight, and to all of you for attending and those watching at home. Also, thank you to the other candidates for running for public office and participating in this forum. My name is Brad Aho, and I currently serve on the Eden Prairie City Council, where I am honored to have served for 14 years. During my tenure, our city has received numerous awards and recognition, including number-one city in the nation. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a 27-year resident of Eden Prairie. Together with my wife, Bev, we have raised our three children here. I'm an electrical engineer and a small-business owner, and work in the healthcare-technology field, where I am currently serving as Chief Technology Officer at Ericsson Technologies. I love Eden Prairie and its residents and businesses, and I am passionate about keeping it a number-one city. I am honored and enthusiastic to run for mayor, to set the agenda and vision to keep improving our great city while controlling spending and taxes. My collaborative leadership style will help us to find innovative solutions using technology to lower our service-delivery costs while improving speed, quality, and accessibility of those services. I will stay focused on the important core services that we provide: public safety through our exceptional police and fire professionals, infrastructure, and I will keep away from distracting our staff and residents on issues like global warming, gun control, and topics that are out of the city's control. Transportation is a critical component of quality of life and is crucial to job growth. I will continue my work to improve our transportation systems, and I believe that keeping Eden Prairie a top city through continued smart planning and provide exceptional city services is what our cities' residents expect. It is my top priority to do this in a fiscally responsible manner, and I ask for your continued support and your vote for mayor as I continue this work that is important to us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ron Case.
Well, thank you, Marty, and also Barb, and to the rest of the League of Women Voters for all that you do to forward the cause of democracy in our communities, but also across our country. I thank you also to all of you in attendance tonight and anyone watching at home tonight or throughout the next couple of weeks. We appreciate that you're doing that, and it matters for democracy. And thank you also for everyone sitting up here this evening. It takes a lot of effort to be involved in our community, and I applaud all of my colleagues on that. You'll hear this evening that people run for office to make a difference in our community, to give back, to make Eden Prairie better. And these are all great ideas. I want to add my take on why I'm running. I want to make a difference in your life. I want to be the mayor that listens to you, that takes action on your behalf and gets things done for you. I want you to feel connected to our local government because you personally know the mayor, who will take your calls, respond to your emails, and come to your neighborhood. I have the deepest roots, the most knowledge of where Eden Prairie has been and where we're going, and the greatest connections with people and groups across this town. Now, things like taxes are really important. Quality of life is why we live here, and keeping Eden Prairie the best city in Minnesota is paramount. But at the end of the day, it's about keeping you totally connected to your government. With 22 years of service to you on the Eden Prairie City Council backing me up, here's my pledge to you: I will be your voice. I will be your mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Freiberg.
Well, thank you for all coming tonight. My name is Mark Freiberg, and I'm running for city council. I'm running because, as a homeowner of 37 years in Eden Prairie, I want to make a difference by bringing forth new ideas and a passion to help solve the upcoming challenges that we're going to be facing in the years ahead. My wife, Patty, and I have raised our three grown children in Eden Prairie, and they're fine examples of our great education system out here. They're all college-educated. They're all very successful in their careers. I'm a sitting member of the Eden Prairie Planning Commission and have been so since 2016. Prior to that, I served three years on the Heritage Preservation Commission. I'm a member of the Historical Society. I'm a member of the Eden Prairie Community Foundation and the Rotary Club. As a small-business owner and having owned numerous businesses throughout my 30-plus-years career in housing finance and real estate, I know the meaning of fiscal responsibility. The challenges that we're going to face in the years ahead here have to do with keeping a stable and growing business environment, where we welcome new business while not encumbering our existing businesses. We need to keep the balance as far as our key city services while keeping our real estate taxes low and our property values high. When seeking out new effective approaches to the challenge of affordable housing, we need to start thinking beyond the box because that challenge is not going to go away, and it's going to continue to get worse if it's not addressed effectively. We also need to be responsible for our wetlands, our sustainability, and seeking out alternative energy sources whenever possible with the city leading the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Muller.
Thank you, Marty. My name is Andy Muller. My background includes 30 years of private-sector experience, including a decade as the Chief Financial Officer of Christopher &amp; Banks. At the end of 2017, the city had $82 million in cash. The general fund budget for 2018 is $46 million. If I'm elected, I will request that city staff prepare a 10-year cash-flow projection so that we can determine what an appropriate cash balance is. Taxes can be reduced if the analysis shows that the city can operate safely with a lower cash balance. City budgets are public information. Woodbury, which is now slightly larger than Eden Prairie, has a general fund budget of $34 million for 2018, while the Eden Prairie budget is $46 million. If elected, I will request that city staff prepare a line-by-line analysis of the two budgets to determine where there are significant differences. Eden Prairie no longer has a citizen-budget advisory committee and needs someone like me with an outside perspective to provide financial oversight of city operations. Much of the city's infrastructure was built in the 1970s and 1980s and is now 30 to 50 years old. In 2014, a city storm sewer collapsed on a hillside near Burr Ridge Lane. A house was condemned, and the city spent $2.5 million to repair the washed-out hillside and to pay for the house. Maintaining and upgrading our infrastructure will save money in the long run, and is a responsibility the city needs to perform extremely well. In closing, please visit my website, andrewkmuller.com, where you can find much more detailed information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, PJ Norrinen.
Hello. Thank you for everybody being here. My name is PJ Norrinen. You've probably seen my sign, PG for EP. That's me. I have been in this country 45 years, close to 20 years in Eden Prairie. I'm from India. My two boys grew up here. They're sitting right there. And they played. They grew up here. They went to school. They went to high school. They went to college. They love playing basketball and baseball in our yards and our parks. When I came here, I could not speak a word of English. I didn't have any money. The first job I was working is in a Chinese restaurant washing dishes. And this country gave me everything I have today. This country gave me a master's degree in electrical engineering. This country gave me a great job, like running an engineering department for a billion-dollar company in ADC Telecommunication. EP gave me the biggest job of all as a CTO, Chief Technology Officer at ADC, and I was responsible for all the technologies. This country gave me the opportunity to serve many boards: public television, Minnesota High Tech Association, president of India Association, chair of Human Rights and Diversity Commission, chair of Community Foundation. You gave me so many leadership and nonprofit positions and small and large companies' positions. EP taught me the EP manifesto. The country gave me the opportunity to handle $300-plus million budget. My budget was in around $115 million in state of Minnesota. And we gave around $4,000 services, government services. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be your next city council member. I want to make EP the best place to live again. I want to create that memory that we had. And I just want to say a last sentence. And I want EP the best place to live for all the residents. I hope you vote for me on November 6th.
Thank you. Kathy Nelson.
Hi. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for doing these forums. They're always very interesting for voters when they go to see who's saying what. To give you some of my background, I've been a council member for the last three terms. I've been the newest member on the council for a long time, but there will be somebody newer now. I've lived in Eden Prairie for 26 years. My daughters went to Eden Prairie schools. For the city, I sit on the Light Rail Transit Committees, the Cable Commission, and the Energy Committee for Eden Prairie. I have a vision about Eden Prairie that's a vital community with green space, trees, and flowers, that's well-maintained, a good place for doing business as well as living. I believe in innovation and planning for the future, solving problems before they get started. I also believe in a financially-stably city with a AAA bond rating, which we do have. Taxpayers expect value for their tax dollars, and I believe Eden Prairie provides that, along with a high quality of life. Innovation does really matter, though. Through various programs and energy savings, your taxes are 7% lower than they would have been without the innovation and the long-range planning, and your services are higher than ever. You can, in fact, do more with less, which is what the city's motto is. I listen to constituents. I do my homework, and I try to make sense, common-sense decisions as they represent you. I'd appreciate your vote on October 6th, or November 6th. October 6th, too. There's early voting.
Thank you very much. We are going to now begin the question-answer period with everyone getting one minute to respond. And again, this is in random order this time. And question one, Kathy Nelson will be the first to respond, with Andrew Muller coming second. All right, so here's the question. What is the city's target for affordable housing, and what do you propose to help us reach this goal?
The city's target is set by the Metropolitan Council, and it's actually probably more units than we have land to actually produce. However, whenever we have new buildings going up, we try to get 15% to 20% moderate-priced units. Often, that goes with some kinds of funding. And we've been very successful in that. I also believe that we need some new types of housing. At one point, there weren't many seniors here, but now there are lots. They've been living in two-story houses. Now they're looking for some flatter ways to live. We need to make, with the land we have left, we need to do different houses. And for our young people to stay living here, we need more moderate-priced homes, and we need to work with developers to make sure we get them.
Thank you. Andrew Muller.
Eden Prairie is substantially built out with less than 1% population growth per year. Currently, there are over 25,600 housing units. We do have 6,000 apartment homes, and renting is typically less expensive than buying. The median home price in Eden Prairie is $378,000. There are 8,800 homes valued at $300,000 or less, so by most definitions, there are a lot of affordable options available. Eden Prairie does have a significant employment base of 57,000. And really, it's up to employers, when they're doing interviews for new hires, for people who would like to locate to the area, to perhaps suggest cities such as Shakopee, Chanhassen, Chaska, Victoria, Carver, or Waconia that have much less costly housing and are a very short commute from Eden Prairie.
Thank you. PJ Norrinen.
This is a big concern. I talk to a lot of people, a lot of residents in Eden Prairie. Affordable housing is a big issue. One of the key things is that we have senior citizens. A lot of us are getting older, and we will be living on our social security money. And then we have our kids that graduated from college, and they're coming back, and they cannot afford to live in Eden Prairie. The other day, I saw a presentation from Met Council. They were saying around 1,400 affordable units need from 2021 to 2030 timeframe. And we have big issues with this. And when I'm elected, I will work with my colleagues and staff to figure it out, what we need to do, what policy we need to do to make this a reality, to provide affordable housing for those people who want to live here, work here, and enjoy life.
Thank you. Brad Aho.
Yeah, so in our last workshop that we met, we discussed affordable housing. And 30% or less of AMI, so AMI is basically the amount of income that a family makes. So 30% of AMI is $28,300 for a family of four. Met Council believes we need 802 units in that category, and 386 for 31% to 50% of AMI, and 220 in the category of 51% to 80% of AMI. So that's a total of 1,408 units. So I asked our staff if they could articulate on how the Met Council comes about those numbers because if you look at the amount of housing that we are going to be developing in the next number of years, it's pretty tough to see how we're going to achieve 1,408 units. But we do have a lot of what they call naturally-occurring affordable units because of just the price of homes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mark Freiberg.
Thank you very much. We deal a lot with this on the Planning Commission. As Councilman Aho just mentioned, 1,408 units were short right now, per the Met Council. We look at the growth that Eden Prairie's going to be facing out to the year 2040. And the Met Council's telling us we're going to grow from 65,000 up to 82,400 residents. They say we're only going to build 400 single-family homes over the next 20 years, but 12,500 multi-unit housing units. A couple of ways that we can sit there and look at things is helping developers out by taking a hard look at our fees. Cities across the metro area and the state in general are starting to look at the fees they're charging developers. Many developers think they're very high. We can also look at the aspect of possibly putting together an affordable housing board or a commission. I've discussed it with the city. It is potentially possible, the board being more informal, by putting together residents and developers that are local. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Case.
So I thought going first was tough. Going last is also, all the data and stats are out there. But I want to clarify just a couple of things. As Brad talked about AMI, which is the area median income, so across the whole seven-county metro area, that's about $94,300. So when we talk about 30% of that, it's somebody that, as Brad said, making $28,000. Or 50% of that, somebody that makes $47,000. And what they count that is a family that has two children. So it might be a single-parent or a dual-parent family. These are low salaries based on who might live in Eden Prairie, based on what you could afford. So how do we do that? I mean, our land values are so expensive. We do have some tools that are available: CDBG funds, Community Development Block grant funds, TIF money, low-income housing tax credit, developer incentives. But I think at the end of the day, we're going to need to incentivize developers because it's very, very difficult to force into a development project some type of a built-in five-units, 10-units, 20-units. Even though we'd like to have that, it can drive the project away. But if we can incentivize them, we may be able to reach some of our goals.
Thank you. The next question, I will start with Ron Case, and then Brad Aho will be second. And this question, and by the way, by the time it gets halfway through and you've forgotten what the question is, feel free to ask me to reread it again. Okay. Will the Southwest Light Rail be a positive or a negative for the people of Eden Prairie?
So I think LRT arguably is the single-greatest economic boon to Eden Prairie, certainly in the last couple of decades and in the years to come. It's the transit-oriented development that will go around the four stations. And the four stations are the Golden Triangle Town Center, Southwest Station, and UHG, United Health Group, or Optum. The transit-oriented development that will grow up around that will stimulate tremendous economic growth. And if you think about the fact that our homes are our number-one greatest assets, we need people to move into this town that will buy our homes and keep our home values up. We need millennial people, people that are 35, 40 years old and going through the lifecycle-housing path. We need them to move here. They want public transportation. So I am 100% in support of LRT. We've had two votes of municipal consent, and I voted in the four section for it. They were 4-1. And it's just a powerful, potential, great thing for Eden Prairie in the years to come.
Thank you. Brad Aho.
Well, I think there's some very much positive things to do with Southwest LRT. I think it's good to have a mix and a wide diversity of different transportation options. I think that is very important. I serve as Chair of Southwest Transit, our bus service in Eden Prairie. We have a fabulous bus service. I am concerned that if our bus service is in direct competition with Southwest LRT, that Met Council may want to drop funding for our bus service. And I think that would be tragic loss to our residents in Eden Prairie and west of Eden Prairie, like Chanhassen, Shakopee, Chaska. And so I am concerned about that. I'm also concerned about some of the aspects of what it's going to do to places like our Purgatory Creek Park because the train is going to ride over Technology Drive and go into the Southwest Station right next to Purgatory Creek Park. And I think with the Veterans Memorial there, I think that could be a disruptive thing. So...
Thank you. Kathy Nelson.
I am definitely in favor of Southwest Light Rail Transit. It will be a boon to the city. In fact, it already has been. A number of buildings are being completed now. It will bring a great deal of business into the Golden Triangle area and other places for jobs. When we've done city surveys, which we've done twice, we get 75% to 80% of the people in Eden Prairie who are in favor of it. Now, that doesn't count everybody, of course. But I believe we are lucky to have it. I've had millennials tell me that without something like Southwest Light Rail, Eden Prairie will become a very gray city because it won't be a place that young people want to move to. And I've also had people who are very excited that they can get to work and into the suburbs and go on a very safe, clean way downtown, whether it be sports games or whether it is for business. They like it because they feel safe with it. I'm looking forward to see it coming.
Thank you. Mark Freiberg.
Thank you. I also would support LRT as a very positive Eden Prairie, providing a couple of things. One that concerns me a lot is still the lack of federal dollars that are involved in it. Eventually, I believe it'll happen. But I see construction still going on without that commitment from the federal. I see rising costs, and I get concerned that it can't be done on the cheap. It has to be done right, if it's going to be done at all. Young people do want it. They do not want to drive. It's something that's important to them, and I think it'll help a lot in helping to define what is the downtown of Eden Prairie as we go ahead in the years ahead with the incoming of Shields. So the big thing with me would be it has to be done right, and I'd sure like to see those federal dollars come through. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Muller.
I do have a couple of concerns. First is the price tag, obviously. Now, the budget, I mean, it was cut back, and then now it's back over $2 billion. And the thing to remember here is that the federal contribution is capped at $929 million. So any cost overruns are going to be picked up by the Hennepin County taxpayers. So we're already starting to pay taxes because most of you noticed that the sales tax rate went from 7.275 to 7.525. So that's in place to fund the light rail costs. The other one, as it specifically affects Eden Prairie, is that when I drive down Prairie Center Drive and I look and see that we're building new apartment buildings there, and we have the Southwest Bus Station there, and now we're going to run the train through there, it seems to me like we're going to create massive traffic jams on Prairie Center Drive and that we're going to have to spend a lot of money to add additional lanes.
Thank you. PJ Norrinen.
I am in favor of Light Rail. And I was thinking, can you imagine Boston without a train? Can you imagine Chicago without a train? Can you imagine London? Any of these cities that grow, like we are growing, without a train system? I was wondering, what will be my grandchildren ask me and say, "Grandpa, you are a community leader. You had an opportunity. Work with the government. leader, you had an opportunity, work with the government, it's a billion dollars going to allocate it to this, this project, and you didn't do anything about it. You didn't capitalize it." So I think it's important to do that. Another thing is, I think somebody else said that here, our kids, my kids are their 20s and 30s, they don't want to drive to Minneapolis, they don't want to drive to St. Paul, and just like your kids. So I think it's important for seniors and the kids to have a light rail.
Thank you. For the next question, we will start with PG Narian, and then Mark Freiberg will be second. So here's the question. Do you support continuing Eden Prairie municipal liquor stores or changing, opening the city to new liquor store businesses?
I, I think it's a good question. I think currently, if I remember right, we are raising around $700,000 from the liquor store. So I would say, it's easy to say, "Let's sell that and let's start something else" without really knowing what that is, and that will impact our residents. That impact in terms of increasing taxes. And I'm not in favor of increasing taxes. And if something working, let's continue, let's work on things, it doesn't work. For example, let's talk about sustainability, let's talk about transportation, let's talk about housing, let's talk about affordable housing, let's talk about those. So that we have so much energy, let's focus on those things that give us the most benefit for our residents. So I would say, stay where we are, unless our staff says something different.
Thank you. Mark Freiberg.
Thank you. I'm going to have to concur with that. After looking at the financial numbers of the liquor, they're well-run, they really are. It's something I've debated quite a bit over the years, but I'm looking at, they're generating somewhere in the ballpark of $11 million in sales out of the three stores, about $720, $720,000, I believe, is the number, is the net figure. And the only thing I would look at that would be that we use those funds, maybe we're a little more flexible what we can do with those funds, as opposed to dedicate them continually in the same sources. I think that gives the city a little bit more flexibility, but I would definitely be in favor of keeping them.
All right. Brad Aho.
Well, I am generally not in favor of, of government acting in the private sector. However, in this, in this case, I think that the, the city liquor stores do make a lot of sense. We do get about, currently about $700,000 of revenue, which we do allocate towards our capital spending, capital improvement projects. And it's nice that we do it through our capital improvement projects, as opposed to putting them into a general fund, like some cities in the Twin Cities do, so that if you do have a dip in sales, it doesn't impact, impact your, your, your budget for that year. And so I think we're doing it very responsibly. I think it is, is a good thing to have safety and that, and that we control how many liquor stores there are, and our city staff is, is really very good about, about not selling to minors, they're never going to sell to minors, there's no incentive to do that. So we, our police really, our police force really encourage us to keep, keep the city liquor stores, and I think right now it does make sense to keep it as we have it.
Thank you. Kathy Nelson.
Our liquor stores do a great, a great deal of good for the city. Actually, I was just checking, and it's almost up to $800,000 this year for the finances they do. If we get rid of the liquor stores, your taxes will go up 2.5% instantly. Whereas right now, this, because we have to spend the money for capital improvement somewhere, there's roads, when playgrounds need to be replaced, capital improvement money is what replaces our playgrounds. The alternative with unsafe playgrounds is to take down the playground equipment and not have a playground in your area. They do things that are necessary for the city. As they said, they do put a certain amount of safety, and they're well-run and well-received by city residents.
Thank you. Ron Case.
So I understand the issue that maybe government should not be in the liquor business. I, I think at some point, it's six and a half dozen to another, there are cities that privatize their water. We're in the water business. Chaska has a utility. We've chosen not to go that route. So I, I think it's okay to have a, a business in theory. I've often used the expression, "We're addicted to liquor here in Eden Prairie," and it never gets picked up by the papers, so maybe, maybe tonight, but I, I think it's humorous. But, but to a sense, we are, because we've gotten used to $800,000 of money flowing in, and Kathy's right, it's every $350,000, 1% increase in taxes. So if we just take that away, some people say, "Well, replace it by selling out permits." You can't. Permits are $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 each. You can't have enough liquor stores in town to replace that money. So we would lose, at that point, $600,000, $700,000 instantly, and to Kathy's point, we'd have to go out and raise your taxes. So it's a good deal, it's great for the city, it's great for the people of Eden Prairie, and, and I'd absolutely support keeping our liquor stores.
Thank you. Andrew Muller.
I believe the city should exit the liquor business. On August 18th, I went to Eden Prairie Liquor, and I bought seven items, and then I went to Total Wine, and I bought the exact same item. So for the total purchase, the Eden Prairie liquor price was 43% higher than Total Wine. So it's really not providing a service to our customers. The city does own the land and building at the Den Road Liquor Store site. The building was constructed in 1996 for 2.5 million, and I believe that we could actually generate about $6 million if we exited the liquor business, sold that building, sold the inventory, which Total Wine has bought that from other stores in the past, and we returned 1.6 million, which is held in operating cash. In 2018, sales are budgeted at 11.39 million compared to 10.28 million of actual sales in 2017. So that's budgeting an increase of almost 11%, whereas year-to-date sales through July are only up 2.4%. So there's going to be a big shortfall in liquors.
Thank you. We will start the next question with Andrew Muller, and this question, let me read it. There is an increase in gun violence in schools and public places. What can we do in Eden Prairie to make our community safer?
Well, I think in terms of the school, obviously, that's going to be up to the school. And Eden Prairie, if you've seen in the paper, they've built vestibules for check-in, and so by limiting the number of entrances to the schools, working with the police department to have them make periodic visits, certainly the schools can be made safer. In terms of, you know, other public places, I think the, like the Eden Prairie Mall probably has their own procedures in place. The Eden Prairie Community Center, which should have policies in place, I'm not aware of them, I don't think they've been publicly disseminated, so, I mean, that would probably be a good place to start, is, you know, if there is a, an active shooter at the community center, what should people do?
Thank you. PG Narian.
This is a hot and sensitive issue for the, all the residents. When they're door-knocking, this is one of the issues come up, and there is some people very mad, very upset about the whole thing going on. But I want to tell you my, my view. I am all for Second Amendment. I think it's a right to have, it's a right to own the gun. I have friends that own guns, and they enjoy it, they do. But same time, I am, I am concerned about some of the things happening in, in our country, that school shooting and so on. So I think we can do some legislative stuff, and, and you know that as a city, we have very limited control of gun control. We can influence our legislators, our senators, in the state level. I think we can apply some common sense ideas to have this senseless violence happening in our country. I think the school problem, it's really the school district. We don't have, city does not have control.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Ron Case.
So the two sides of this gun violence prevention conversation, I think are more distinct and more rigid than almost any topic in the political landscape today, and that's saying a whole lot. They're clearly, and I've gone door-to-door, and we've all experienced this, I don't know what the numbers are, let's just make out, 40% of everyone is just, "I've got to own my gun," and 40% of everyone over here is, "I'm scared to go to a mall, to go to church," and then the others are somewhere in the middle. So the point is, far from running from it, city government ought to be the conveners of conversation. Across our nation, communities ought to be pulling groups together. There are some, as PG pointed out, there are some common sense, commonly agreed ideas that I believe we could be instrumental as a city in pushing up the line, up to the legislature. I've heard from my gun-owning friends, these ideas, just permit all guns, just, just mandatory wait times, ban bump stocks, register all private sales, just some, some basic common sense things. And as somebody just pointed out here, and I see my time, that we, as a city government, don't have a lot of control. We do have zoning power, though, and that's what we're looking into as we speak.
Thank you. Brad Aho.
Well, obviously, everyone is very concerned about safety, and especially the safety of our kids. We hear about too many incidents nowadays where kids go in and shoot up schools, and that is of great concern to all of us. And so I've spoken at great length to our police department, our police chief, and I am very confident that they are working in concert with the school district to make changes to the schools, to harden our schools, to make them harder targets, but also, our police is very, very diligent about following up on issues. So when, when we hear about some of these cases, like in Florida and others, where, where the kids that did the shooting were contacted by police 37, 39, many, many times, and the police and the FBI and other agencies didn't do enough to stop this, our police said that if we have something, if we have any information, we will follow up on it, and we will make sure that it doesn't happen. So I'm really confident that our police are doing a fantastic job in concert with the schools.
Thank you very much. Kathy Nelson.
Gun violent prevention is necessary everywhere, and I think everybody wants to see it happen in starting with themselves, to be aware, to look at what's happening with your kids. The city of Eden Prairie does do many things that we can do. There are police department members at the schools, in the high school and junior high, they're there all the time. They work with the kids, and they're not going to run outside the door and not do anything if a shooter comes into the school, they are going to stop them. Also, they make sure that all our federally licensed gun stores are actually doing what they're supposed to be doing. They also do the permits for being able to purchase a gun, they do very good background checks, it usually takes about a week, and that is something that we can do. The council did send a letter to the legislature urging them to look at this problem.
Thank you. And then Mark Freiberg.
Thank you very much. Well, I want to say that I believe the Eden Prairie School District does an excellent job of protecting the students. And I always want to say this aspect, that when we look at the horrific problems we've had with gun violence, we still have to remember the Constitution matters, and that, you know, we're dealing with state and federal laws. Everyone has good ideas here, and I certainly would want to be part of it as far as supporting it. One thing that we can do as a city, I believe, would be that make sure that whatever costs are involved from our law enforcement, that they're always adequately funded, as far as, as they work with the school district when it comes down to keeping them all safe. Thank you.
Thank you. This one's kind of a follow-up. We'll start with Mark Freiberg. Should Eden Prairie ban gun stores in the city?
Well, that one's starting to go right back to what I was just saying.
Yeah.
They can't, as far as that is, the, gun, gun stores are federally and state regulated, so I do not believe that the city has any, you know, any power as far as actually banning them.
Thank you. Next would be Kathy Nelson.
He's right. Our city attorney has told us that we cannot ban gun stores legally, they have to be allowed somewhere in the city. The only thing we are looking at is, you know, should it be, you know, the large commercial districts, or should it also be allowed in the small neighborhood centers? And that discussion hasn't been finished at this point, but where the gun stores are currently located, in the major area where they want to be, seems to be the very good spot for them to be. It's good for their business, and it's the right place in the community.
Thank you. Andrew Muller.
I've written three lengthy emails to the City Council regarding my opposition to the one-year moratorium on new firearms retailers. Walmart has sold ammunition in Eden Prairie for 25 years, Gander's operated since 2006, and Arnsen Arms has been open for at least five years. These are good corporate businesses that pay property taxes, and I'm not aware of any negative impacts to our citizens which have been caused by these businesses. So spending money on outs, on outside legal fees, surveys, and studies is unnecessary and a waste of taxpayer money.
Thank you. PG Narian.
Well, I don't think, like you're saying earlier here, we cannot stop business to start in Eden Prairie. We have four gun stores, and, and whatever the, the council decide to do, none of those changes, they're, they're, they're where they sell or not sell. I'm an engineer, I'm a technologist, so I, I take data, based on the data, and if the residents can, believe there is some concerns, we are working for the residents of Eden Prairie. It's not my personal opinion of what I believe. If the residence has a question, there are few of them, then we need, we have the right or we have the, we need to discover what is the real data is from the residents, and based on that, we have to decide. And only choice we have is zoning, and that's what we're talking about. But stopping gun sales in Eden Prairie, I don't think, is not a question here.
Thank you. Ron Case.
So several people have answered the question, "Can we ban them?" And of course, the answer legislatively is no, or even probably federally, but the question was, "Should we ban them?" And I would say the answer is no. And for a lot of the reasons my colleagues have shared up here, that I think there are times when local government can and should step into the world of business opportunities, but not to limit competition. And I also think it's imperative on city governments, and I think there's an obligation to zone to protect our residents, and that could be a gas station that might go in right next to somebody's yard or something. So what we're looking at right now is the idea, should we zone ahead of time to ensure that gun stores do not land 100 feet outside of a high school, or 300 feet from a church, or 50 feet from your yard? And that's what we were gathering input on, and I think, I think that is where spending lots of money to gather input from our residents, which we do in our surveys regularly, and, and that's what we're waiting on, that's why the moratorium exists on zoning gun stores.
Thank you. Okay. Brad Aho.
All right. Well, I won't go into the fact of whether we can or can't ban them, because we can't, as we've all heard. The only thing we do have the opportunity to do as a city regulatorily is to regulate the discharge of firearms, so, and we do that as a city already. So we are doing what we can legislatively. In terms of the moratorium, I did vote against the moratorium, because I do think we have a long history of gun sales in Eden Prairie where they have not been a problem, we have not had any negative impacts from those gun sales. And so I think it's, it's, it's fine if we want to look at the zoning ordinances and, and determine where we want to have gun stores, future gun stores. We will have four, and I think there are probably not going to be a lot of other business people that are looking to open gun stores in, in Eden Prairie with four, four stores here, especially successful ones like Shields, Arnsen, Gander Outdoors, and Walmart. And so I think that a moratorium is not necessary.
Thank you. The next question, and we'll begin with Brad Aho, is about climate change. Do you believe that climate change is a result of human actions increasing carbon emission? If so, what policies would you suggest that Eden Prairie do to reduce the carbon footprint and its energy use?
Well, as an engineer, I think there's a lot of, a lot of doubtful information about climate change and whether it's humanly produced or not. And so I'm not going to get into whether or not it's humanly produced, because I don't think that's really important. I do think it's very important, though, that the city does everything- I do think it's very important, though, that the city does everything it can to reduce the amount of energy that we use, because it's a very good thing for our environment. It's also a very good thing for our spending. We've done a lot of things with our 2040-15 initiative, where we've reduced the use of our energy in our buildings, we've reduced the energy used by our vehicles, and we've made great improvements in our budget as a result of that. And so I think we need to do everything we can to reduce energy use as a city and be a good example to both our residents and our businesses. And we are working with our businesses and residents on sustainable Eden Prairie to make sure that people have the right tools to accomplish that goal.
Thank you. Ron Case.
So I know occasionally I'll be accused of using hyperbole and superlatives too much. Today, coming back from work, listening to NPR and listening to a scientist that was up in the Arctic, saying that the Arctic ice is warming twice as fast as all the rest of the places on Earth. So at the risk of hyperbole, I truly believe, and I'm so not alone on this, 99% of science climatologists, this is the crisis facing humanity on Earth today, the crisis. So the idea that every community has to do what it can, and obviously finances get in there, but we have to take action on all the levels that we're able to do that. And I think that even symbolic things, like having our council take a vote supporting our mayor, who signed on to the 350 mayors in support of the Paris Accord, which 184 nations on Earth did, and our nation was the only one that didn't, and our council took a vote 4-1 in support of her signing, and I was in that majority. So there are symbolic things, but there are practical substantive things that we have to do for our children and for our grandchildren.
Thank you very much. Mark Freiberg.
One thing when it comes down, one thing when it comes down to climate, to the climate itself, is I look at the way I'm thinking, and I'm not smart enough to say absolutely, okay? But I'm sure willing to learn, okay? And I continue to learn. Based upon that, there are things we could do and should do. One of the ones I like as a city that they're moving forward on is start working with the alternative fuels, you know, with the maintenance fleet of the city, maybe someday moving it up to the police department, also the fire department, there's been talk of that. There's been talk of installing solar panels on the large city-owned buildings, city hall, the community center, large maintenance buildings. We do need to move forward on as far as with alternative fuels to reduce that footprint. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Mueller.
Well, the Earth is 4 billion years old, so we're probably constantly living between ice ages. Obviously, 10,000 years ago, we were under two miles of ice. So I'm not a scientist, so obviously I'm not going to know what causes global warming and cycles. But one thing we can do, I think, is related to an article I recently saw in a paper, is that your average backyard has hidden superpowers. Its soil can absorb and store significant amount of carbon from the air unexpectedly, making such green spaces an important asset in the battle against climate change. Backyard soils can absorb more planet-warming carbon emissions than soils found in native grasslands or urban forests. So basically, everybody keeping their grass green does a lot of good for the environment.
Thank you. PG Narayanan.
You know, first of all, I'm an engineer. I believe in science. I believe one plus one, always two, never more. Other thing is, I believe in my sister. She's a Harvard PhD in applied mathematics. She spent 30 years in her life doing research in fishery and ocean, and she tells me every day, we have a problem. Ocean water is rising. This, like Ron was saying, this is a real problem. We have to start acting slowly. We cannot do everything change immediately, but we have to act slowly. I'm fully supportive of sustainability plan we are thinking about in Eden Prairie. I think we need to reduce carbon CO2 emissions. I think we have to worry about water usage, reusage of that. And I think, as an engineer, I have the knowledge and passion about this subject, and I think it's a major problem for us, and we should do something as a policy.
Thank you. Kathy Nelson.
I do believe that climate change is real, and it's a real problem for probably everyone on Earth at this point. Can our city change everything? No, but we can do our part. As of this, in a couple of months, all the energy that Eden Prairie buys will be solar, either coming from rooftop units or buying it from XL Energy. Water is an issue, too, and we've changed some water use patterns by having tiered amounts for water usage. The city can do stuff. We have an energy challenge that the council passed at the beginning of the year, urging every single person and business to try to cut their energy use. The good part of that is not only does it help the climate, it saves you money. And money is a good thing for business to cut back, but so is their sustainability. And it will do slowly some good if we all pitch in to help.
Thank you. The next question, if you are elected to, reelected to city council or elected, how will you make decisions about new initiatives, policies, and city budgets? And we will start with Kathy Nelson. This will go in reverse order.
Okay, getting down the questions real quick.
Yes, yeah. How will you make decisions about new initiatives, policies, and city budgets?
I will probably do it the way I've tried to make all my decisions as a council member when representing you. I try to do my homework. I talk to people, listen to what they have to say. I gather as much information I can. I try to use common sense, and then I make a decision and vote. I've been doing this the whole time. I think it works, because it's almost a collaborative effort, but you do have to do your homework. For budgets, you've got to look at what you need, but you've also got to look long-term. It can't just be short-term, because if you let your roads go for four or five years, don't do anything, save money for four or five years, your roads will last 20 years less, and in the long run, you'll spend twice as much money. I believe in long-term budgeting.
Thank you. PG Narayanan.
The decision-making process is a pretty complex subject. I think step one is listening to your staff. We are working with the Eden Prairie city staffs. We have to listen to them, and we ask them questions, and understand their views, and understand pro and con, and also listen to other colleagues in the city council, and understand their view, either way, pro and con, and take additional research that you do, talk to residents on those issues. Regarding to budget, I have handled, like I earlier said, $115 million budget, and the way it's, it's very complicated. It's not like you can just cut. You have to say the trade-off. How do you take money from A to B and best return on those dollars? And I think that by talking, by analyzing data, that we can do a great job of it, all about data.
Thank you. Andrew Mueller.
With regard to new initiatives, I certainly would want to review all the information that's available to me, and obviously get input from everybody that's a stakeholder. With regard to budgeting, that's an area where I have extensive experience. I was the CFO of a $500 million company and responsible for the oversight of the budget. So certainly, I intend to work with our staff and, you know, make sure that they follow best practices. I'd like to see the staff interact with their peers in other cities. All the budgets for every city are public information, and so they can line it up, find out where we're different from other cities, if there's a good reason for it, or if there's something they're doing better than us, or we're doing something better than them. The interaction of good ideas between the cities, I think, would work to the benefit for more efficient operations.
Thank you. Mark Freiberg.
When it comes to new initiatives or policy, the word "why" comes to mind. I use it a lot on the Planning Commission. When I want something clarified, I ask, why? Why is variance being asked? It's a wonderful tool, because if you ask it enough times, you're going to find out what you want to know. But it comes down to gathering all the information you can get before making the decision. It goes without saying, you have to do that. Combining that with the why will get you to where you want to be with it. City budget's a whole different thing. We have an amazing city staff. The city manager has four CPAs at his disposal. That budget's created already by the time it gets to the city council. The city council approves it, but it's already been created. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Case.
So I don't think there's a formula exactly, and those of us that have been at this for a couple decades know that there's a process maybe that we go through almost subliminally. But I think the first thing I would ask is what's best for the most residents? I clearly want to know what the impact's going to be on the most people. I go out and I research. I think rarely is there a development project that I haven't personally visited, or walked over the land, or talked to the developer, or checked in with the neighbors. I always want to know, and in the end, make the decision for what's the best for the good of all, but then how can we mitigate the direct impacts on contiguous neighbors? Because that's important, too, because they're the most impacted. When it comes to budget itself, I mean, I think, again, our record's incredible, but we have a 10-year levy average of raising our levy. That's the amount that's going to drive the taxes that you pay, 1.8% a year, average for 10 years. So I think we're doing really good work, also accomplishing the objective of that, of where we spend our money. So obviously, our decision-making process, I think, has been really good.
Thank you. Brad Aho.
Well, as an engineer, that's exactly what I'm trained to do, is how to analyze and evaluate things. And we have a lot of good tools in use at the city. We have our boards and commissions. We are blessed as a city to have many, many people that are very talented in many different fields. And those people come to the city, and they work on our boards and commissions, and they give us great analysis of things. And so many times when we have a new thing that's coming before the city, we look to our boards and commissions and ask them to analyze them and look at them and give us feedback. And they can really take the time to dig into those projects and look at them and give us really excellent feedback. So I like to use that feedback. I also like to talk to our residents and do my own research. But again, I think it comes down to what is the best for the most people in Eden Prairie with the least amount of detrimental impacts. And so that's really kind of the process that I follow. And from a budgetary perspective, I think we always have to look at, what is it going to do financially to the city? Is it a short-term thing? Is it a long-term thing? Are we encumbering the city for a long term, or is it just a short-term, one-time thing?
Thank you. Okay, the next question. What are your thoughts on prohibiting tobacco sales to people under 21? And we would start with Andrew Mueller.
I guess, as, I mean, certainly, we've done, alcohol sales have been prohibited to people under, or have to be 21. So, I mean, I see a lot of harm from tobacco, so certainly, that's something that I would be in favor of if, you know, certainly, I would like to see if other cities or states are also doing it, but I think good can come from reducing tobacco use in the country.
Thank you. Mark Freiberg.
I would be against raising the age of tobacco sales in Eden Prairie. I'm going to say that because of the border communities itself. I see it with, we look at Eden Prairie right now, they're selling tobacco, you know, as far as 18 years old. Bloomington, right across the street, 21 years old. That impacts some businesses that are borderline on that. It's a state issue. If it was raised on a state issue, absolutely. You know, that's great. My biggest concern is one of business impact itself, with unfair, you know, competition on those borders.
Thank you. PG Narayanan.
Finally, I found something that, quite different opinion than Mark. I believe in science, again. I have friends who's doctors, and they tell me, number one cause of death is tobacco usage. And so if we can reduce that death rate in our country, our kids, not knowingly or making some bad choices, it's our responsibility to guide them properly. So I think that we should limit, like alcohol has probably less impact than tobacco. So I think we should increase the age to 21.
Thank you. Brad Aho.
Well, I guess in terms of tobacco usage, I am vehemently opposed to tobacco usage. I think it is detrimental to people, and I really detest it. However, I do think of liberty, and I am kind of a libertarian in that regard. And I think that when people that are 18 to 21 can serve in the military, they can vote, who are we to tell them that they can't smoke a cigarette? Also, I do think it will impact businesses unfairly in Eden Prairie, and I think that's a bad thing. I would like to see it happen at a state level, maybe, or maybe a federal level. But as far as the city being, as I see it, as an activist in doing something like that just at a city level, I don't think it makes sense, and so I would not support that.
Thank you. Kathy Nelson.
I'll admit, it's something I haven't made a final decision on. I'm very against smoking. I'm very against young people starting to smoke. I would like a little more information from citizens in the community and what they think about it. If I had to absolutely decide today, I'd say, yes, make it older, but I do want more information on that. We've taken more information on a lot of subjects like that, and I'm guessing that the residents of Eden Prairie would prefer to have it up, but I would like to know that.
Thank you. Ron Case.
So the stat is something like 95% of adult addicted smokers start before the age of 21. So the goal is to get people not to start before 21, because after that, they have a different brain that processes all their decisions differently. Personally, I'm absolutely in favor of T-21. I will consider it as mayor, and I'll definitely take the advice of residents and businesses. I don't want to disadvantage businesses, but I want to do what's best for the most people. As a disclaimer, I work at United Health Group. Healthcare costs are skyrocketing, in case people didn't notice. Whatever we can do as a society to lessen the impact of our healthcare costs is a good thing. To Brad's point, yes, every law limits the liberty of one person for the good of all, so we have to always weigh that. So yes, we might be limiting that one 21-year-old, but we are going to benefit possibly the hundreds of millions of people that are paying their healthcare cost insurance. So I think generally, I lean toward it. I definitely like our city to look at it.
Thank you. All right, we have another question here. Eden Prairie, and we will, our first one to respond will be PG Narayanan. This question says, Eden Prairie residents expect a high quality of life, but are concerned that their taxes have risen too high, especially seniors and young families. How do you propose to keep a balance between city services and taxes while supporting a vibrant economy in Eden Prairie?
Well, from my experience, the taxes come from the expenses. So you have to analyze the expense, and it is a trade-off between a good service and what tax being charged. Today, Eden Prairie, we are like third lowest tax compared to our neighboring cities. So we are doing really well. Probably Ron, Brad, and Kathy can talk about last 10 years, I think we raised the tax by 1% or something, that I heard. So we have been doing really well, and I think the staff done a great job. And so when we, when I became the city council, I think one of the things that I will analyze, the budget aspect, where we are spending money, and especially the area that, you know, the police, public safety, lakes, parks, those, that's Eden Prairie. That's us. And not willing to take those convenient away. And not willing to take those convenient away and decrease the tax.
Thank you. Mark Freiberg.
Well, one thing, one thing about the city portion of the real estate taxes is about People in Eden Prairie do demand a high-level city-delivered services. There's no question about it. One of the things we can do is working closely with the city manager and the staff that the various departments are adequately maintained, deliver that service, but that there's not a lot of fat there. I mean, that we really want to run as lean as we can, but we always need that counterbalance. There's going to be a fine line there that has to be judged, and there's no absolutes. And I think that's going to go a long way.
Thank you. Brad Aho.
Well, we're always trying to balance taxes versus quality of life. And we do, we do a city survey where we analyze what people in the, in the city think. And we always look at those, look at those results and analyze what do people want for services? And as mayor, I would use my vision to use technology to reduce the cost of delivery of services, to make sure that we're using the right tools to deliver higher-quality services at a lower cost. And also, I think it's very important to encourage business growth, because businesses provide a lot of tax relief to our residents, because businesses are taxed fairly high, and those businesses reduce the cost of the taxes for the residents. And if you look at other cities that don't have businesses, they're the ones that are getting the local government aid and other, other things, because they don't have that tax base to draw on from the businesses. Plus, the businesses provide great jobs for our residents, so they don't have to travel outside of the city to go to work.
Thank you. Kathy Nelson.
Currently, our taxes are in the middle of the lowest quartile of the taxes in the Twin Cities. In other words, we have some of the very lowest taxes in the whole Twin City area. On the other hand, we have some of the highest services in the Twin Cities area. And we've done that by making sure we get value for our tax dollars. We do a lot of innovation, finding new ways and better ways to do the same thing for less money. And that cuts back a lot of our taxes, albeit inflation still does bring everything up. We've kept our taxes pretty much within the inflation rate. And I believe that people are getting value for their money, and they find a hard place, hard to move anywhere else and have lower taxes and the same house values as we have here.
Thank you. Ron Case.
So just a little bit more data here. Our tax levy that we just preliminarily said at the last meeting projects that will, or actually sets, that will raise our tax levy 1.8% on residential property this year. That will result in a 3.6% impact. That means the state formulas get in there and mess with it. We could have a high levy and a low tax impact, or a low levy or high tax. But we, our levy is low. And then the total property tax projected increase will be 2.9% across Eden Prairie. You know, in all the years I've lived here, all the years, I've 40-some years in Eden Prairie, I have never heard one single person tell me that they moved into Eden Prairie because of low taxes, or they did not move into Eden Prairie because of high taxes. Now granted, senior citizens might move out, but it's the quality of life. It's the parks, the schools, the public safety, the things that we spend money on. So as everybody said, it is a balance. I think we're hitting the mark. I think we're hitting the mark fabulously, because our residents give us 95% approval ratings, and we have some of the lowest taxes in all of Hennepin County.
Thank you. Andrew Mueller.
And I think the things that I've talked about really will not affect city services at all, but will reduce taxes. The one thing I said in my opening was that the city had $82 million in cash at the end of 2017, and only a $46 million general fund budget. So really, what I'd like to see staff do, because we are pretty much built out, is forecast our cash needs, do a cash flow projection out 10 years, and see where we're really at. And we can reduce taxes if we don't really need to carry such a big cash balance. Exiting the liquor business, I believe, will allow us to return $6 million to the general fund, and that's at least 10 years of the contribution from the liquor store, which I see declining in future years as competition eats away at our business.
Thank you. The next question, and we will start with Mark Freiberg. Do you support the proposed expansion of C.H. Robinson?
I'm going to have to default to the aspect that I need to gather more information before I can answer that question, because I don't want to be vague. And so I'm going to say that's something I'm going to have to research a little more on.
Thank you. Kathy Nelson.
The council hasn't seen the final proposals for the C.H. Robinson. The initial ones had roads going out, which would make it difficult for some of the neighborhoods to get in and out. But those aren't even at the planning stages, and they've been working with staff on that. Until I would see a final plan, or at least a plan going into the planning stage, I really couldn't tell you that. But I do know that some of the things on their current plan that they went to neighborhoods with aren't acceptable.
Thank you. Andrew Mueller.
I'm very pro-business, so certainly, C.H. Robinson is a major employer, an S&amp;P 500 company. And so I do believe that we need to work with them and accommodate some of their needs, but at the same time, respect the neighborhoods that are in the neighboring community.
Thank you. PG Narayan.
I am also pro-business, but I think any business interfere with our residents, and residents trump the business. So I think that here is one situation that we can work together, figure it out, a common path, and that make the residents happy. And also, we want to expand the businesses in Eden Prairie. That bring more jobs, and our kids, and more, more, help us with the taxes. And it's better, more people moving into Eden Prairie, having a good company like a C.H. Robinson, or other companies like that. So I think we need to work out the details and to make both parties happy, and we still keep them both growing, business growing, and the residents happy as well.
Right. Ron Case.
So the original plan was two stories, and it was spread over quite a large area. And the new plan has shrunk the footprint, but raised it up to three stories. I could take the Judge Kavanaugh route and say, I'm not going to answer this, because I'll be voting on it someday. That being, that being said, I will answer it. I, is it too soon? I do, I do support C.H. Robinson's effort to make its campus function better. And we do want to keep our largest businesses in town, and not only because they employ many of our residents, but because the tax basis is great for Eden Prairie and all its residents. That being said, the contiguous neighbors have real concerns and real issues. And so I would absolutely, when this does actually get into the process and come before us, I will spend a lot of time in the neighborhood. And the ways that I've operated in the past, I will continue, and that's to make sure that we do the best project that also meets the needs in the best ways, or mitigates the negative impacts for the neighbors.
Thank you. Brad Aho.
Well, anytime a business or anyone else is willing to invest their time, talent, and money into Eden Prairie to make Eden Prairie better, I think we ought to do what's right. And that what's right is to try to see how we can help them to be successful. And I think being successful means that they have to be successful with their projects so that it accomplishes their goals as a, as a project. But we also have to make sure that it's, we're successful in that it meets the needs of the residents of Eden Prairie, the current residents. And so there is always a balance between those two things, but I think, I think we can have practical solutions that will work out both ways. Because for most people, and me included, the largest investment in my lifetime is my home. And so anything I can do as a council member or as a mayor to make sure that people want to move into Eden Prairie and keep coming to Eden Prairie, and keep Eden Prairie an attractive place with jobs and, and low taxes, that's a good thing, because it's going to help people financially for the rest of their lives. And so I think helping C.H. Robinson be successful is the right thing to do.
Thank you. The next question, and we'll start with Kathy Nelson. What kinds of policies, if any, will you pursue to promote social and racial justice in Eden Prairie?
Well, the very first thing is something I have been doing for quite a while, and I think so far, the police is doing it very successfully, is our police needs to view everybody as the same individual. There can't be any differences depending on who you are or what your background is. It needs to be the same justice and justice for everyone. They have a very good track record of that, but I have gone on record with them that I am very proud of their track record, and I expect them to continue that track record. We do have an inspections department that goes through every single rental unit once every four years. And we expect the appliances to work, there to be heat, the electricity to be safe, mold remediation, water, obviously. Elevators are supposed to run and be in working order. And we insist that apartments keep those standards. That does mean that if people are renting units for modest rates, they still have a great place to live, and they can't be bullied into not moving in or out if the apartment owner isn't keeping things up to stuff. We make sure they are.
Thank you. Andrew Mueller.
Again, I believe we should treat all people equally, and as I do agree with Kathy, in terms of rental units, we need to perform the inspections as they're scheduled, and we should hold the landlords to maintaining excellent standards so that people do have great places to live.
Thank you. PG Narayan.
One of the privilege I had was to serve in the Human Rights and Diversity Commission. That helped me to learn a lot about our city. And our city today consists around 20% non-white and 15% foreign-born. I truly celebrate the diversity in our city. I think people has issues with rental issues and housing problems. I have been in a couple of meetings with them, and there's some really bad situation happening, and I think city got involved and tried to resolve. So when those situation comes, I think city need to step in and make sure the rental owners that are properly treated.
Thank you. Brad Aho.
Well, I think Eden Prairie has done a great job in, in trying to reach out to the immigrant populations and to really promote social and racial justice. For example, our police department has, has hired members of the police department and really promoted that to make sure that we have people on the police force that can work with the immigrant population so that they have a comfort level of working with law enforcement. I think that's important. We also have our CERT program, which is our, our safety program. We've, we've encouraged members of the immigrant populations to be members of that CERT group so that they can learn more about the city, learn more about the, about being integrated into our population. We also do things like People Fest and other immigrant population celebrations, and I think those are important efforts. I think there's still room to, to improve. I think we have more to do. But I believe that we are making good efforts and good strides, and I will continue to support those and make sure that we do that as mayor.
Thank you. Mark Freiberg.
Well, one thing we always have to remember is that we're all part of the same community, and that everyone came here for really the same reasons. I will never, ever accept any type of discrimination. It's not my nature on it. I also have been into various housing meetings, as PG, he was also with me, on it. I know it does exist, and it was addressed very directly, how to solve it with the city. That's something I can't be tolerated on that. One thing we can always strive for with the changing demographics is the inclusiveness. I love the People Fest that we had. I think that's something, if we have a festival like that on a tradition basis, it can help bring together the community, which is greatly needed in the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Case.
One of my memories as a sixth-grade teacher back about '97 or '98 was the first time that I saw, walking down the hall ahead of me, four of my 12-year-old girls in my class, a Caucasian, a Hispanic, Somali girl with her hijab, and I don't remember the fourth, but all arm-in-arm, just laughing and giggling, walking down the hall. And I thought, you know, kids get it. And so I think at the end of the day, when it comes to social and racial justice, we've got to get people together. And I think the city can be a player in that, in convening those events that bring people together. I don't know if that's bringing the council on the road. I mean, we did that a couple of years ago. I'd like to continue to do more of that, take council meetings out to where people are, more town halls, maybe on specific issues like social and racial justice. I've actually myself visited these apartment buildings that have had some concerns and issues and talked to people, and I've attended the Eden Prairie Chinese Association, attended a mosque event, just to talk to people. So I think as a council, we need to get out, but we also need to be bringing people together.
Thank you very much. Now we come to the concluding, the concluding statements, and we will start with Ron Case.
Well, thank you again to the league, to everyone in attendance tonight, watching this evening, and also, again, in the weeks to come, and also for all of my colleagues up here. I hope to be serving, well, I will, Brad and I will be serving one way or the other, but I hope to be serving with you as mayor. Like America, Eden Prairie's always been a great place to live. And three of us sitting up here this evening share a lot of the credit for that success. Where we differ is on approach. I start with people, their wants, their needs, and willingness to support what we do. Some of my colleagues up here will start with budgets and line items and cuts. Now, we usually end up the same spot, but I like my approach better because it begins and ends with people. I've been part of a 22-year legacy of council success. You can see it every time you visit a park, drive on our roads, or turn on your faucet. But it's going to take vision and connectedness to all of you, listening, responding, and representing you in order for Eden Prairie to continue being the city that you chose when you moved here. So I'm asking for your vote so that together, we can keep Eden Prairie a really great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Aho.
Well, I've really been honored to serve for the last 14 years on the city council, and I make it a priority in my life. In that 14 years, I've only missed two city council meetings. One, because I was in stem cell transplant down at Mayo for cancer, and the second one was because of the birth of a grandchild. So it is a priority for me. I take it very seriously, and I have a passion for representing the people of Eden Prairie. I love to listen and talk to our residents. We have so many wonderful residents. I really get a lot of energy from hearing about all the things that people are doing and their wants and desires, and I really look forward to working with them as mayor. My vision for Eden Prairie is to use my technology background to ensure that we are delivering the best quality services at the lowest, the lowest prices, but also that we are doing a great job at doing that. And I really hope to be your mayor and guide the city with my vision, and I ask for your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathy Nelson.
We can have the great quality of life that we enjoy in Eden Prairie by putting our priorities on sensible budgets and sensible taxes, well-maintained roads and parks, and other city services, support our fire and police people for a safe community, do innovation and use energy wisely to keep problems from getting big and making us a part of the future, a housing mix for all generations, redevelopment in a vibrant business community. Every time I've run, I've promised residents of Eden Prairie that they won't have to worry about roads, or parks, or water, or sewer, snow plowing, or a safe community, because I will worry about it for them and make sure it happens. I've kept my promise, and I make the same promise again if I am elected. I would love to have your vote on November 6th.
Thank you. Mark Freiberg.
Thank you. I want to thank each of you who came out this evening to meet with us, because your vote does matter. I believe this election is one of ideas, and who has a vision that embraces real solutions to tackle the complex challenges that our city will be facing in the years ahead. to tackle the complex challenges that our city will be facing in the years ahead. The most challenging decisions that we regarding will be in housing, business growth and stability, in addition to climate-related issues and sustainability. I believe that I have a vision that'll help define our future by working to provide real solutions for real people. I don't want to just be elected. I want to be effective. I will work hard to stay engaged with the community at all times. I'm asking you to vote for real solutions for real people. Vote for Mark Freiberg, city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Muller.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. Also, I'd like to thank all the people in attendance here as well as those who submitted questions. I've thought extensively about ways to conserve your tax dollars and to protect the city's investment in its infrastructure. I'm a fiscal conservative. I'm also a member of the Arbor Day Foundation and have planted 75 trees over the last five years. I believe in conserving our natural parklands for future generations and that we'll need to control buckthorn on our forest lands to achieve that goal. Please visit my website, andrewkmuller.com for more detailed information. I would be honored to have your vote on Tuesday, November 6th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. PG Narayan.
Thank you, everybody. It is a pleasure being here and speaking with you. My name is PG Narayan. I'm an engineer, I'm a technologist, and also a business executive. I am passionate about EP and I want to, I want to make sure EP the best place to live. I will, I will promote more businesses to come to EP and make EP a business-friendly city. I will work with the nonprofit organization to understand and help many issues facing EP like homelessness, sex trafficking, senior concerns, and we already talked about affordable housing. I make sure we have a fair taxes. I have managed a very large budget. I know how to slice and dice numbers, like many of us here. I will make sure our parks and lakes, roads take care of. It's the most important part of Eden Prairie. I encourage city to be more eco-friendly. I will work with all nationalities and make EP an inclusive city, respect and open, respect and honor EP manifesto. I'm an engineer, I'm a business executive and trained to analyze problems and solve. I will promise you that I will listen, I will ask questions, and I hope you vote for me on November 6th as the city council.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the candidates, the audience and those viewing this forum on cable and video for your participation in tonight's forum. As I said earlier, the forum will be broadcast until the election, November 6th. You'll also see the link on the, to the streaming video at www.lwvmeph.org. And we will now conclude our formal event. You're welcome to meet the candidates informally in the lobby outside the double doors. And this room will be closed now. Thank you so much. Let's give them a big applause.
Good job, Ron.